District 721 to order. Please note that all board members are here except Tammy, who's on her way. And let's stand and say the pledge.
A diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, could, do we have? Could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, six, zero. Don't have a consent agenda tonight to approve, so move on to the action items. First, we have a resolution canvassing returns of votes of school district general election.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to consider the resolution canvassing returns of votes of school district general election.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. Be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 721. It is hereby found, determined, declared that the general election of the voters of the district was held on November 3rd, 2020, and was all respects and duly legally called and held. As specified in the attached abstract in return of votes cast, a total of 21,717 votes of the district voted, I'm sorry, voters voted in the election on the election of four school board members for four-year terms on the board caused by expiration of a term on the first Monday in January next following general election as follows. Candidates Jean Kubeish, 6,544 votes, Matthew Goldaddy, 4,687 votes, Daniel Call, 4,218 votes, Dennis Hovlicek, 5,976 votes, and Kim Holden, 6,241 votes. Candidates Jean Kubeish, Kim Holden, Dennis Hovlicek, and Matt Goldaddy, having received the highest number of votes, are elected to four-year terms beginning the first Monday in January 2021. The school district clerk is hereby authorized to certify the results of the election to the county auditor of each county in which the school district is located in whole or in part. How do you vote on this resolution, Leo?
Yes.
Ah, Kim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Dennis, yes, item passes.
Okay, the, the second item is a resolution authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing school district clerk to perform other election-related duties.
Do I have a motion to consider this resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. The chair and clerk are hereby authorized to execute certificates of election on behalf of the School Board of Independent School District 721 to the following candidates: Jean Kubeish, Kim Holden, Dennis Hovlicek, Matthew Goldaddy, who have received a sufficiently large number of votes to be elected to fill vacancies on the board caused by the expiration of terms on first Monday in January next following the election based on the results of the canvas. The certificate of election shall be substantially in the form as follows. After the time for the contesting of the election has passed and the candidates are filed all campaign finance reports required by the Minnesota statutes, the clerk will of the board is hereby directed to deliver the certificates to the persons entitled thereto personally or by mail. The clerk is hereby directed to enclose with this certificate a form of acceptance of office and oath of office in substantially the form as well. How do you vote on this, Leo?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Dennis, yes, item passes.
Okay, our next item is learning model update.
All right, I'm going to give a learning model update this evening. And things are changing rapidly in our school and area, and I'm going to talk about that and where I think we should be heading here. To present. Technology might have been my lowest-rated area in my evaluation, but I did know that. Okay, I just want to go over where I think we should be heading here and be able to entertain questions and, and get us all on the same page here. I just want to remind everybody that our top two priorities, I've said some since the very beginning of this pandemic, is that we want to provide a safe learning environment for students and staff, the safest learning environment possible. And to have high levels of learning. And when I talk about high levels of learning, we're talking about academically, socially, emotionally, and physically, and we're talking about high levels of learning. When regards to that, whether we're in the hybrid model, in-person, or distance learning model, or for that matter, if we're talking the arts or athletics, we want high levels of learning. Those are our top two priorities, and I think if we always keep that in mind, we're going to make the right decision. I need to show some data with you, but before I do that, I want to give you the criteria for our learning models. This is just, we did this probably a long time ago, maybe when I was in the hospital, I can't remember. But this is what you read about in the paper a lot, and this is sort of the first part of the data that you may make a decision on. I think it gets weighted, well, for us, the least, but it gets talked about in the media the most. But it's positive cases in a county per 10,000 people. And keep in mind, when we talk counties, we talk Scott County, where 54% of our students come from, La Sure County, 28% of our students, and 18% from Rice. So with that, as you can see there, if it was under 10, 09, we'd be in-person learning from all students from the very beginning. Well, we were never that. They set it up where it was almost impossible, I will say that. I told our principals at the high school and middle school, if that's the way it's going to be, it'll be very slim odds we'll ever get there this year. 10 to 19, in-person elementary and hybrid secondary. And we were close, you'll see our figures here for in-person elementary, but with the guidelines they gave us for social distancing in the classroom, it was, it just couldn't be done. So that's why, going back, why we decided to go hybrid for elementary and secondary. Hybrid learning for all students, where we've been, the majority of time is right between 20 and 29. And 30 to 50, it still stays hybrid for elementary and goes distance, and it's distance learning for all students over 50. Now, these are the state guidelines that, you know, they encourage you to follow. Okay, let's look at case numbers in our three counties, as you can see where it starts out in each of the counties. This goes all the way back to July, when they first started this. And as you go down, you know, they pretty much, you know, when school got started, you know, they're pretty much still in the teens, started hitting the 20s in mid-September there. And the month of October, you can see that it starts jumping, and this is a, you know, there's always a two-week lag on the information to the general public. But on Halloween, October 31st, you look across there, La Sure, Scott, and Rice County, you know, we're all over 30, well over 30, but we're, we're at 51 and 60 for La Sure and Scott, so very high. These are what are projected, all right, that we get the information from last week. And they haven't officially come out because there's still cases that come in, so the data changes. So that's why there's a, a two-week lag. Not every clinic they go for testing gets that turnaround. But this is what they're projecting now. La Sure, almost, well, just under 90, Rice County, 100, and Scott County, 105. And we know this week, if that was included, the next figure for Scott County is already at 83 with four days to go. So most likely, they'll be over 100, in fact, they could be over 105 in Scott County. So what I'm telling you is the numbers are exploding. I know you've heard the news, but this is our reality that we're in right now.
Do you know what part of the population that's in?
That's what I'm going to go over right now with community, or is there, you're talking about area of the county?
No, the age, well, area and age.
I don't have the age with me, but they give us that information. 50% of the, of the positive cases are from 18 to 30, I believe. Community, our zip code, 56071, you can see there, because that's sort of the second thing you look at, is city after you look at county. And you can see the data that we get from the state, it's just trended up every week since the very beginning. Now, this is what I put together. I did have a couple of questions, and it's, I get about one a week, but this week I got two or three after my letter went out to parents. I just had a couple of emails, but they're going, well, what's, what do you mean by low numbers? Why aren't we in distance learning? Why, you say that the district numbers or building numbers are relatively low. Well, if you look in the top there, that's district information. We got roughly at 700 employees, all right? The total number of confirmed cases since the beginning of the year is 24, which is, you know, just .03%. If you keep going there, those are quarantine numbers from cases that come within the building. And then students, we've got about 4,100 attending right now, and 18 confirmed cases since the beginning of the year, which is .004%. And then on there, you can see the quarantine that's happened. Now, those are quarantines from, that happen within the school. I'm going to tell you, outside the school, they're much greater. Total confirmed cases per school, and this is what people wanted, and that, you know, and we've been slow to do this because the county health officials aren't real thrilled that we should give this data just for data privacy, but I think we can give it, you know, if it's cumulative, we can give it. And you can see the, the numbers we have there for each of the schools, with high school, the most students and staff being the high school. So even the high school wasn't that bad. So going back a few days, when I made the decision to keep K-8 in-person or in the hybrid, you can see why, because the building still is the most important. Okay, the reasons to go distance learning. It's basically, school districts around the state are doing it because of staffing reasons, okay? It's just the, the amount of people that go in quarantine, that get in contact. It, it's not necessarily that we have positive tests going on, but if they have contact, they got to go into 14-day quarantine. It's been a challenge the last month for, for us. I know our business office, administrators, everybody we can think of have been subbing in classrooms when teachers or have to go in quarantine. And when we talk staffing too, don't think it's just teachers. I mean, we're down in custodians right now, we're down in paraprofessionals greatly right now. So it's all employee groups that we have to pay attention to. But we have extremely high number of positive cases, like I said, with the county, city, and I will say this right now, projected building. I will say this, I want to make sure this is clear too. I said this last meeting, it's not spreading in the schools. It is not, there is not one transmission case. When we've done contract chasing, and Jen Scheniker is our Director of Health Services, and she's helped by Maran Ballard Curriculum, who now is doing everything, they do the tracing, we do not have one confirmed case. It's outside with family or friends or events going on. But it has been a challenge. The staffing's been a challenge, and it's also another challenge is the number of students in quarantine. Today, we had almost 300 students in quarantine, okay, that can't come to school. They might not have it, they might not have it, but they have a family member that might have it, or they were in contact with someone at work, or wherever it may be. And that becomes very difficult for our teachers to have that many in quarantine, trying to teach them all.
Who sets the criteria for quarantine?
The state. We also collaborate with county health officials, public county health officials. We meet weekly. Thursdays, we meet with, we met with Scott County today, and on Fridays, we meet with Rice and La Sure. We also have a regional support team that we met with before we made the decision to go distance learning with grades nine through 12. And it was a mutual decision and their recommendation at that time to do that. And the regional support team is people from the state and epidemiologists, and also county public health officials. So just in review here, this, this went out for grades nine through 12, distance learning timeline. Our first preparation day for distance learning for our teachers, so it's non-student day, is tomorrow, and then again on Monday, the 16th, and we will start the first day of distance learning. Now, let me just say one thing too. I get, it's a little frustrating, you know, making a decision when people are saying, you know, other districts are doing this, other, we're not making the decision based on other districts. It's not like a snow day, okay, that a storm's coming through, all super-tens call and say, what are you doing? And you can see the storm coming through this path, and, you know, you like to be together on it. You've still got to be based on what's going on in your city and in your buildings. So it's not, you know, it's not a snow day like that. I do want to mention one other thing too. I think one reason we've kept the cases down is we were in the hybrid model. And when you're in the hybrid model, you have so much social distancing. You go to the high school and middle school, I mean, the locker banks are out of bounds, the kids have been great wearing masks, the teachers have been, and the other staff, support staff have been great, keeping social distancing and enforcing everything, but the kids have been great. There's been no problems. I remember everyone was worried about what if a kid wouldn't wear a mask? Our kids are great. There's never, that's never been a problem. But being in that hybrid and having that social distancing, I think is one reason why we haven't had any type of breakout in any of our schools. And I, I credit the staff and the students for doing a great job there. I am making a recommendation that we go distance learning K-8, just simply because, going back to the reasons to do it, we have extremely high numbers, and the challenge again for staffing is very difficult. And if we do it now, it will give us time to plan. Now, I'll just go over my timeline here. We stay in the hybrid learning model. Kids can get their stuff beginning, I mean, next week. Obviously, we have elementary conferences, no school tomorrow, but we have school for middle school tomorrow, and then Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of next week, Thursday and Friday, the 19th and 20th, we have teacher preparation days, and the first day of distance learning will be November 23rd. I am one, I truly believe kids should be in school. I want in-person learning, but there's no way right now that we can do it with the number of COVID cases and the number of people in quarantine right now. And what's projected to happen, it's only going to get worse. I am hoping, on both of these timelines here, K-8, 912, we take it to holiday, to the holidays, and we're not going to go, some school districts are going to the January 15th. I don't want to do that, because if they do, if it does go down, I want to be able to come back in January. And again, I don't want to, I do need to say this, but again, when I talk about snow days, there is not a school in our area that isn't doing this right now. And our recommendation from the county health officials are strongly telling us this is the right decision to make at this time. I want to talk about co-curricular activities, because some people don't seem to understand this. This has nothing to do with prioritizing athletics and activities over academics. It has nothing to do with that. We are going to continue co-curricular activities. And the reason for it is that it's safer learning conditions, because it's smaller groups of people. It's smaller groups of people, as simple as that. It's sort of like the CLC, or ALC, or Accomplished Learning Center, we're going to keep that going. We've got, I mean, obviously, some at-risk students that need to do that and do better being in-person, but it's smaller, we can control it. We also got a, the Minnesota State High School League has a committee that's been formed and received a report from the Minnesota Department of Health. And since, you know, the shutdown ended last spring, the amount of transmissions on sports for baseball, football, volleyball, soccer, you name it, I mean, I don't think there is any over 15, 15 cases for, what is it, six months already? So it's such a low number. It's not like we're not doing academics. We're still going to have high levels of learning, as highest levels of learning as we can through our distance learning. So it's not like we're stopping the academics. We want high levels of learning and academics, and also for our co-curricular activities. I also believe in the social-emotional, like I said from the beginning. It's not, we're not just here for academics. I'm worried, I'm concerned about the social meeting, the social-emotional needs of our kids. If we don't do it, number three, a club is going to do it. These kids are going to play somewhere else, some organization, and I think we can control it in a safer environment than any other club where kids are going to be with other kids from different communities. And finally, the Minnesota State High School League, as long as they say we're having seasons, we're going to keep having seasons. So that's where our rate now, our facilities too, until we have, unless we have problems with outbreaks within our buildings, youth organizations that are using them for, whether it's basketball or whatever the sport is, volleyball, soccer, we're going to continue to have the space open for them too right now, because we think we can do it in a safe manner. That my last slide? I'll open it up for questions right now. Oh, could I, I'm sorry, I need Sandy to talk about early childhood and our, the effect this learning model change is going to have on our other employee groups.
So first, we want to talk about early childhood a little bit, our school readiness and ECFE programs. Really, the guidance, you know, they're community ed programs, and the guidance would say that if we can do it in a safe manner, and, you know, parent, there's a demand for it, we can continue to do that and charge for it. So I've been on the phone with Janelle Kirsh, and we've decided we're going to send something to our parents, just asking if they want to continue with school readiness and, you know, in a safe manner, in, in the same safe manner. We're basically in the hybrid model for them. In fact, we're following the social distancing guidelines, we've got them in very small pods, and so we, we will keep offering those programs. And that's a, that's a really good news, I think, for, for those children and staff. As far as other employee groups, if you remember, I think it was just a few weeks ago that I brought several MOUs for approval to you, and that, that laid out what we would do if we had to go to distance learning for these various employee groups. And we actually, already yesterday, for Nutrition Services, talked to them about being furloughed with, with the high school closing, and now, of course, that will change to be much broader. We still have some need for Nutrition Services, because we still do some meals. We will still have some students in our buildings, but the numbers that we need are very low. And you'll, you'll, if you'll recall that, you know, that's funded with federal grant, and you can't pay employees from that fund if it's funded by a federal grant, unless they are actually preparing meals, which isn't going to be happening. So if we continue to pay them, we would have to pay them from the general fund, and that's something that is going to be very difficult to do. Custodians, we still will have need for some custodians, but not as many as we currently have, and we'll be talking with them tomorrow. Transportation is a little bit of a complicated picture. We obviously aren't going to be transporting the majority of our students. We are going to be transporting some students and possible, possibly some non-public students. So we're going to probably be furloughing staff there and then calling them back as we need them, as we know what routes we need. And last, but not least, are the paraprofessionals. Within that group, there are building nurses, there's health paras, and there are special ed paras, community ed paras, general ed paras, media paras. We've got a lot of different types, and I'll be working with the principals and the special ed director to see who we need to keep. And, you know, special ed paras will probably stay, they're still going to be working with their students. Instructional paras, again, will probably be okay, they'll be working with their students remotely. Lunchroom and playground paras, obviously, we don't need, we don't have any students in the building unless we have some meaningful work for them to do. It's really not possible to keep paying them. We do give them a two-week notice per contract language, and so we'll, we'll be providing them some, some notice to, to several paras, as well as some of the other groups. So I'll be working on that over the next couple of weeks to determine who gets furloughed and who, who stays. We're hoping this is extremely temporary, that shortly after the holidays, we can be back in hybrid again, at least for elementary. We're hoping that we're able to do that. And, you know, and, and the employees that I've talked to, they understand, I mean, they understand that we can't keep paying people if there's nothing for them to do. And, you know, the eligible for unemployment, we are paying their benefits for a full three calendar months. So people that are furloughed will get benefits through the end of February. The district pays for single insurance, so that's a really important benefit. Most people are most concerned about their benefits. And so we're hoping that that takes that pressure off of them. We also are going to ask for volunteers. We've already gotten some volunteers for the Nutrition Services. Some are a little uncomfortable being here during, when it's surging, you know, that's what's happening in the state right now, and they would prefer to take a furlough. So we've got several employees that are wanting to be furloughed so they can, you know, stay safe at home. So I think overall, it's going to go well. It's not going to be easy, but, you know, I think they're very understanding. They know our priorities to keep kids in the classroom, and they know that we would do that if, if at all possible to do so. And I think they trust Mr. Dittbrenner to make those decisions, and they, and, and, you know, so they know we're doing the best thing that, that we can.
And I think it's pretty obvious that we want learning to take place here, in the schools. I mean, if we could, if I thought it was the right thing, I would keep us going with what we're doing, but I, I really cannot do that. I do need to say this though, it's not like last spring when it's a government, governor shutdown deal, all right? In the high school, for example, Principal Adams is meeting with teachers, kids that can't get learning done at their home. If, if they're receiving some special services, or if they're in an industrial arts class, a shop class, mechanics class, we're going to work on bringing kids in. So, you know, it could be art, it could be, the vocational classes, like I said, to bring them in, and we can still arrange transportation. It's going to take a while to get that organized, it might be a week, week and a half in, but we want to be able to bring kids in that can't learn in their classes at home. Does that make sense? So like last spring, I mean, as you can imagine, try doing or teaching a hands-on type of class or industrial arts class at home. So she's working on that, and, you know, it'd be some in the other buildings, but mostly at the high school. So again, I think the distance learning, again, we don't want to stay in it for a long period of time. Like I said, I don't want to go to January 15th, because if it, you know, if it goes down, I don't want to miss that opportunity to have some type of in-person learning or hybrid in early January. So let's pray we get through this and, you know, get back to as normal as can be. Yeah, I guess that's all I have. Now, I'll open it up for questions or comments.
Sandy, could you go back to the cases per school, please? Okay, I can, I can see high school, I can even see six through high school, but I don't see any reason at all to shut down the elementary schools with those numbers.
Yeah. Well, right now, it's not so much positive cases right now, it's the exclusions that we get with contact from externally outside the school. And so what becomes, you got a couple of things going on. And so what becomes, you got a couple of things going on here. You've got, and Sandy mentioned it, employees, it's not just teachers, but you do have employees that do have concerns about what's going on with the virus, maybe not so much here, but spreading it within. And, and just the staffing challenges, you know, with, like I said, and then with the number of students that are in quarantine. We've got, it's just rising every day, the number of students that are not in school. And it makes really, it makes it really hard right now. So it's both staffing, the challenge of, of staffing the schools with all employee groups for that matter, and the number of students in quarantine. So our cases are low. I'll be honest with you, Leo, if you would have asked me yesterday, I was fine with what we were doing. But in one day, we've had so much change and so many more cases. And like I said, the, the county health officials and, wow, the others, every other school district is, there, there, every other school district around. I'm not saying that's why we make a decision, but it's that bad that they're all going to K-12 right now.
But if you go distance on the middle school and high school, that almost completely eliminates any staffing problems.
Yeah, it definitely helps and that's what, when I met with the principals today, I said tomorrow, obviously because middle school's the only one, but Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, without having high school going, really helps out for the staffing on those three days. I would say too, it's, it's, it's just, it's the number of kids going right now that's, and projected by the county health officials, it's, it's just going to go greater right now. And it's just, it's just really hard time right now.
How many K through five students do we have?
Oh, we have, just attending, I think just under eighteen hundred.
Or cases?
That's why.
How many zeros is that in the percent column?
What's that?
How many zeros is that in the percent column?
Quite a few, quite a few.
But that doesn't take into account the people that are home because they're quarantined.
Right.
There's still a lot of people, what, three hundred missing school?
How many of them are from the elementary schools?
Uh, it's, that is growing. I don't have the, I should have Jen here today, but. I can't tell you the number, but there's a good share at the high school. We're also having problems too at the elementary. Here's another one, is just, it's like a domino, it keeps happening. But, you know, we, we start with so many distance learning kids and so that's how many teachers we have. And so we have pretty high numbers at almost every grade level. You know, thirty to forty kids per teacher that just do distance learning at elementary. Well, now, now the principals are getting more and more calls from parents that, because we didn't go distance learning, that want to shift our kids there. And so then we end up with a staffing issue for distance learning too. So it just, I don't know, it's like a domino effect.
And I, I think also just from a staffing perspective, if we're able to plan it out and for parents to plan, you know, some, some schools are going distance learning overnight. And that's extremely difficult for parents, students, and staff. It just happens just like that. And we can see with how much spread there is in the community right now, it is, it is very significant. And it gives us a chance to plan it out a little bit. So that, that was big in my mind for, for parents and for staff to be able to plan for it, but.
Other questions?
What's going to happen with the peripheral schools as far as busing?
The busing will stay on, they, you know, they're going through the same thing too. I know Kim Doyle, the principal at St. Wens, for example, talked to me the other day, the Archdiocese, they're meeting right now and trying to come up with solutions too. So I don't want to speak for her, but they got, they have the same challenges we do. And I'm sure, yeah, they're going to, they're going to have to adapt. I'm not sure what they're going to do, but they're looking at different options right now. But I can't really, I, it's not my thing to say.
No, I'm wondering about the busing, do we still?
We'll still provide busing if they need it, yep.
Even, even if we're not busing the public school kids?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, we're obligated to do that. Not, there's not many of them, I'll tell you that much. But like I said before too, we, we will provide busing at the high school level for kids that don't have it, that are in groups that need to come in.
And the special ed kids that need to come in will be?
Yes, yep. And like I said, we're keeping the CLC going.
Is special ed going to be distance learning too, or are they coming in?
Uh, they're working out a schedule for kids, a lot of them will be coming in, yes. They want the more, they're, it's small groups, it's safe. That's, to me, those kids coming in are like the C, and it's just like sports. It's not, we're not having six hundred kids in a school at one time, you know, with seventy teachers. So it's something that's manageable that we feel we can do.
I would think it would be more important for the special ed kids to get here anyway.
Yep, they're working on it, I know Amy is.
It's very hard to do distance learning for special needs students.
Yep.
It's hard for all the kids, but it's got to be especially hard.
Well, I will tell you this, you know, going back, you know, talking, I mean, I've, got friends that have high school kids, no one wants to do this. I mean, no one. The kids are crushed. You know, they've gone through a lot at the high school level. And, you know, I can't imagine, you know, taking away co-curricular activities too for them. I mean, I just, it doesn't make, doesn't make, I want to be as safe as possible and do the best job we can academically, virtually, or remotely, whatever you want to say. But I just, I'm just praying that we're not in this that long.
Well, teachers, can you explain how that's going to work? Whether they're going to be reporting to school or are they going to be working from remotely as well?
That's, they're encouraged, I mean, basically, I think all the principals, I know Principal Adams at the high school met with her staff, they want the teachers in school. And I know she basically said if there's a situation, why you can't be there to meet with her and we'll, we'll work with them. But I, I think the vast majority will be working from school. So it's, yeah, that's different from last year too, yep. And in the other schools, will you be doing the same thing?
So on a high school level, Principal Adams will also be working, like if your child is in the distant learning and they're struggling and they're getting further behind, they're not understanding it, there can be arrangements made for that child to come in.
Absolutely.
Get the help that's needed.
Tammy, thanks for bringing it up, I sort of forgot about that. She's got, she has it prioritized, she's worked with her staff, there's priorities. The first priority, like I already said, the, the classes that can't be taught in special ed. The second priority are kids that are struggling, that need intervention. I can't remember what's for that, but I think there's like three areas. And so, working with the county health officials, they encourage us to do that, a lot of schools are doing that. You just got to be organized and you can't rush it. You got to just make sure you got it organized and you got to keep the social distance and masking rules and everything. Can't get lax on that, but, no, we want kids in the schools, especially at the high school level, all levels, but that, that need to have it, that can't learn from home. So intervention or struggling students is an important component of that. Anything else?
Do you want to take high school, the high school students to distant learning effective Tuesday, November seventeenth?
Yeah, they'll be this, next Tuesday and then K eight will start on Monday, November twenty-third.
And it's all through the holidays?
Yep, up until December twenty-third. Up to December twenty-third. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
So our next item is approval of calendar and schedule changes. Oh, here it is.
Yeah, it's the four, six point four.
I don't know where it is.
Just scroll down here.
All right, next thing, teaching planning time. You guys know the, I think I told you about the governor's executive order, that we need to provide thirty minutes of daily extra planning time that will take instructional, that count as instructional hours, so two and a half hours a week. We were planning to do this anyway, but then the governor stepped in. And so we met with a teacher from each building and the principals and we came up with two options. One option was Wednesdays, every Wednesday for two and a half hours. So we'd have either a late start or early release. And then the other option was Wednesdays for two hours and then there'd be two additional planning days before the start of second semester. So anyway, they had meetings with their staff, came back and we fine tuned it and then we sent out a survey. On the survey, they chose the Wednesdays of two hours. I think sixty-five percent there in the blue want that with two scheduled planning days before the start of second semester. And it was also early, doing an early release, it was favored by the teachers too. So we don't have the two days figured out yet, but we will start this on Wednesday, December second. And on this, just so you know, by the governor's order, it's either, it's for hybrid or and/or distance learning. So it's not like we can pick. And it's got to come out to two and a half hours per week. So, yeah, it's, it's a court, that's a governor's executive order, so we're following that. Oh boy, here's our calendar. Janelle, was Maren going to talk about this, or you actually want me to talk about this?
Hi, Maren. I can speak to it. So the updated calendar has the latest, excuse me, the early releases on the calendar effective December second. And we do have on the calendar that this is assuming that we operate in a hybrid or distance learning model per the language of the new executive order. So potentially this calendar may need to get adjusted again, but we'll evaluate that as needed. And then we also will be adding two additional planning days before the end of the first semester. We have not set those dates yet, but those will come to you for the November thirtieth board meeting. And that was part of our discussion with our teacher group that we met with both earlier this week and then a few weeks back when we were looking at how we could support our teachers and add additional planning time. So in addition to the early releases, we'll be adding those two days as well prior to the end of first semester. And then in the spring, the other changes that are reflected are minor. We were, we, secondary early release from a Thursday to a Tuesday simply to offset the interruption of our B group students. The B group students had the early release for conferences back last week. And so for our spring conference, we wanted to move that to an A group to keep that equal. And then also for the spring conferences for elementary, we moved, there's a Friday day for conferences, which impacted the B group. And we moved that to a Monday, which would impact the A group simply again to offset the current impact right now in semester one is that the B students have, tomorrow was their school day, but it is a conference day. So really the, the conference moves are just to make things relatively equal for our A and B groups. Though we don't know what model we'll be operating in in March, we wanted to make those changes now, simply to have the calendar equal.
Maren, when I read the executive order, I thought it said it had to be changed by November thirtieth. Would that mean that the twenty-fifth of November would also have to include a late day?
Sandy?
No, I don't think so. I think that it's just, you know, you need to have it effective November thirtieth and that's the start of the week, so.
Okay.
We're going to be providing that on Wednesday, so I think we're fine.
Okay, just wanted to make sure it didn't have to include the Wednesday before.
Yeah, initially they said we had to have it implemented by November sixth.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve this calendar.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, seven zero. Okay, and the next is an approval of the Second Step Child Protection Curriculum.
Yes, we have been working with the Duck Cup, who has actually recently supported our students. Typically, they do a late February presentation to our, to our middle school and high school students. But this year, just with the uncertainties of the year, we actually invited them in the past two weeks and they did a virtual summit for our middle and high school students. And it was, it went really well. And a big shout out to Nikki Hackfeld and Alina Peterson for all their work in helping coordinate that. And again, the support of the Duck Cup. Really, Alina and Nikki did a survey of the students and the, the positive impact that it made with our students really shows the value and the need for this continued support from Duck Cup in helping our students and our staff as well. And so with that, the Duck Cup was looking for ways to help support our elementary students as well. And so there is a Second Step curriculum for child safety that we would like to purchase for all of our elementary schools that the Duck Cup would be gifting to us. And so this would be a supplemental curriculum that would support our, currently our SEL, our social-emotional learning curriculum is also through Second Step. And so these would pair nice together. Also with the support of our social workers, that could also help deliver these lessons as well. So looking for your approval for the child safety curriculum on behalf of Second Step. This would also encompass early childhood as well. Duck Cup wanted to encompass our E-five kids.
Does anybody have any questions?
No, I just think it's great, I threw the, threw it all and I think it's a great addition. So thank Duck Cup for that.
Who are the authors of this program?
Second Step is a, it's called Committee for Children. And so it's a, it's a company that creates, they have multiple curriculums. They also have a bullying prevention curriculum that they have also. And so it's a team of researchers, it's a, it's a company that's been around for a while. Our interest in them started with actually our preschool. They started using the SEL curriculum years ago and then we added it into our elementaries.
Thank you.
Could I get a motion to?
I'll make a motion to approve the Second Step Child Protection Curriculum.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, seven zero. Next item is five-year enrollment projections.
We typically, I typically, typically present these in October, but got a little bit behind, so I actually feel pretty good about even getting them done November twelfth. This is not an easy job this year. I think in the past, it's been pretty straightforward and certainly not very easy right now. First want to talk a little about the enrollment loss that we had. We were down about a hundred and ninety-three students from our projection. And had Samantha McDonald do an analysis for me. She worked with the building secretaries to try to figure out where we're at with all these kiddos. So kindergarten, kindergarten, we're down fifty from what we projected. We were able to find that sixteen decided to homeschool or being homeschooled, thirty-five went to private school. And we had thirty-two K holds. Now, some of these would have held regardless. I mean, we're, we were starting from a, from a point that we didn't have our K numbers finalized yet. So we don't know what they would have been had we, you know, not experienced a pandemic. But that's what we were able to, to find out. Certainly, I think we had higher holds than we would have had if there wouldn't have been a pandemic. Grades one through five, we're down a hundred and sixteen. Fifty-four children are being homeschooled, forty-three went to private and seven went to online school. So we're down about twenty-five from the projection. Some of these kiddos just moved, they're just, you know, the families moved. Some of these kiddos just moved. They're just, you know, the families moved. But we were able to find that four are being homeschooled, five went to online school and five went to private. So we don't know where all those, those kids went. However, like I said, some actually just moved. I mean, families move and, um, and then high school and CLC were actually up a couple from our projection. And, but we do, do know that two were homeschooled, two went to private and five went to online school. So again, some of that, I probably, I don't know if the homeschool would have happened, but the private and the online might have happened anyway regardless of the pandemic. So how do we project enrollment, um, from this, um, the place where, where we are at? This year's enrollment, obviously I have a, a model that I follow. And, um, so I, you know, we typically lose some students from, um, October through the end of the year. We lose some ADMs for a variety of reasons. Um, and so, um, you know, we just take where we're at on October 1 and, and lower them a little bit because that's typically pretty close. Uh, for kindergarten for twenty-one, twenty-two, um, talked it over with Tim. Um, we decided to go what the projection was last year for kindergarten next year and then add ten more because we know we had more holds. So went with three hundred and twenty-two. There is a methodology, but it's, it's a bit of a guess, to be honest with you. I mean, there's, I don't know how this is gonna change education and, I mean, nobody knows that. Um, and then we talked about holding it at three hundred going forward, um, from there. Grades one through twelve, um, we had, we have an inkling, I think, of what, what kids are gonna come back for sure. And then we have, um, an inkling of ones that might come back. And then we know that some just were, were gonna lose. And so we added back in the, all the yeses and half of the maybes. And then I used a seven-year average ratio from the prior year. Went seven years to help reduce the impact of this year's enrollment decrease. Typically, we haven't gone back seven year, we haven't used a seven-year, um, ratio. We've done a two or three year, but you, you really have to try to take this anomaly out. So we went back seven years. So this is what our ADMs, we go back all the way to sixteen, seventeen. I show the projected and actual. For nineteen twenty, you see the projected was forty-two eighty-two. We're actually at forty-two fifty-seven, which is the most I've been off, um, in the past several years. It's still very close, but it was off a little bit. You see there that, um, next, um, bar graphs, the preliminary projected that, that, that I said would come this school year back in October of last year was forty-two ninety-five. Right now, we're at forty-one oh six and I'm projecting that they'll come in at four thousand seventy-six. And then you can see for next year for twenty-one, twenty-two, it goes back up to forty-two, forty-three. Um, still not quite getting back to where we were in nineteen twenty. Um, and then it goes up from there. Um, like I said, it's very hard to project what's gonna happen here. And this is, you know, is probably, I mean, there's always one thing you always know about projections. You're always going to be wrong. But, you know, this is the closest, um, I, I feel like we can get, uh, for next year. And these are ADMs and these are, um, adjusted pupil units. That's actually what we get our funding on. The bar graph is very much the same, but you know, we get a one point two waiting for high school, or for middle school and high school students. So what does this projection, uh, mean? So the, in twenty twenty-one, we're gonna have a minus four point three percent, um, enrollment, which is the first time that's happened in, uh, since I've been here, ten years. And then twenty-one, twenty-two, I am projecting a four point one, so we almost get, you know, get those back. And then a one percent, a one point four, a point six and a point eight. The average from fifteen, sixteen to nineteen twenty was one point six percent a year. And then the average for the next five years is one point six percent per year. So it, you know, it seems to make some sense. I always like to look at big picture. Seems to make some sense. Um, you know, I think at the end of this year, we'll get a better feel for how things are gonna go next year. But for this, when I do our, uh, you know, my financial projections, this is what I'm going to, um, to use if you feel they're, uh, reasonable, uh, to use. This is open enrollment information. Um, it shows kind of the red is the open enroll in. Uh, the blue is out and then the green is the net. And you see this year, we did not really lose any open, I mean, the net is actually higher right now than it was. I thought that that number would be lower, but we're actually staying very stable in our open enrollment net, which is very good news. Any questions or comments? Do you feel comfortable with these as we move forward?
I think you're being a little bit optimistic. While we're sitting here not having school, there's families and companies figuring out how to do it at home better.
Yep, I know. I think this will change education and right now we don't know what that's going to look like.
I just think those are very optimistic numbers, looking forward.
You're talking twenty-one, twenty-two and beyond?
Main, mainly twenty-one, twenty-two. It's gonna be a big hit. There's not gonna be a lot of kids coming back that are high school age now. Like there, there's people out there right now who got nothing better to do than sit and figure out how to get rich on making school better at home.
No, I agree. It, it, this will change education. There's no doubt.
You know, it may be a fad. It may, oh, five years, ten years down the road, wash out. But for the short term, for the kids who are in high school now, I think a lot of them are gonna finish high school that way.
And luckily, we didn't lose a lot of high school kids. I was surprised about that, but we didn't lose a lot of high school kids. Which I was very pleased to see. I mean, the elementary, obviously there's more, seemingly more choices. Homeschooling is easier for the younger kids.
Well, and now you've got companies putting together packets, so, you know, you can, you can just order third grade and it all comes in a box.
Yep.
Teach your way through your lesson that way.
The, these have been tried in the past though, too. It's nothing new.
Except what's new now is kids can't go to school.
Right, and, and that, that can change it real quickly as well. So, you know, it's, it might not be as doom or gloom as, uh, it sounds, you know. It's, schools, schools that are in session and do a good job with, uh, children are still highly, highly recommended by most parents.
These have been tried before, but like I said, right now, they're sitting perfecting them.
Yeah, they're trying.
Yeah, I think, uh, on the homeschool, well, of course, I talked to quite a few people, you know, when they made that decision, they'd call me or email me. Most of them said it's temporary. I'm not saying that's not, it's, I, I believe part of what you're saying is true. Uh, or, you know, we have staff members that, because they had, you know, instead of daycare, they went to private school, but, you know, I'm confident we're gonna get a lot back. But it, it's hard to say. It's really hard to say.
I guess I'm not worried about the homeschool piece because I think that's truly a lifestyle. You need to be able to have a parent at home and there's so many dual family, um, incomes right now. And I just don't know if that, I think people are gonna determine to see this, that this was hard work by homeschooling. And they're gonna be excited to, once they can go back to school, they're gonna be excited to send their kids back to school. So I don't know. I, I mean, you maybe are right. Maybe this is, these are optimistic because you obviously have to do budget forecasts based upon these numbers. But, um, like you said, I think it's really hard to predict where these numbers are gonna be at a year from now or two years from now, so.
The dynamic for homeschool is changing too. It used to be a lifestyle where one family homeschooled their kids. Now I see lots of instances where somebody gets three or four or five kids together.
Sure. I agree. I agree. I agree.
Yep.
Pods.
Yep.
Yep.
Pods.
And then you, you know, then, then all you need is one available parent instead of one from each family.
Sure.
Leo, I'm not gonna disagree with you. It's not ideal. But I'm late to the meeting because I had to have this meeting at work. And it just, it's not good. And I don't know what else to do. I, I will support this. I want to get our kids in the school. I want to be back in school one hundred percent, FaceTime, done. No more, no more distant, no more hybrid. But we're not gonna get there. We're not gonna get there in the next two weeks. We're not gonna get there in the next four weeks. They keep saying we gotta lower, flatten that curve, flatten that curve. Well, all I see is that curve going up and I don't know why. It's very frustrating. And I do not want my kids doing distant learning because it's horrible for me. And I end up pulling my hair out, but I'll be bald to take this because I think it's the best thing that we can do right now. And I think we have to look at it for a short period.
Seven months ago, it was flatten the curve. Now it's stopped the spread. You cannot stop the spread. It's impossible. It's gonna happen. We flattened the curve and now instead of it, you know, running its course, now we're, we're getting, sneaking up into year two of it.
And no matter what we do or how we do it, I'm sorry, but it's not good enough for our governor.
It's not good enough for a lot of people.
So, I don't know. I.
I've, I've heard it from plenty of people that we have no business being open at all.
Oh, yeah.
And I've heard it from just as many people. It's like.
I wanna get my kids back to school.
Yep.
Yeah, I know. I'm with you. And it's frustrating and it's, it's hard. And it's a decision that is impacting our children's learning. So what is the best, what is best for our kids?
Well, the future is a moving target and, uh, when we have the pandemic in there to stir it up and to have it, uh, be part of the future, but we also have to look at the positive too. And that is, we have, uh, uh, shots that'll be coming along and, uh, we might, uh, see a big change after people have been inoculated too. So, you know, uh, right now, we're, we're in a world where we've never been before and, uh, hopefully won't be again for a long time. And, uh, I, I think you're conservative in some respects. Uh, I, 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 I think that you have a extremely moving target here. And, you know, it's, it's your best shot and, uh, we have to go with it.
Well, you can't, you can't open the schools completely if, if staff and employees are not available. If they're, you know, if they're out sick, then it's not doable.
Very difficult situation.
I know this is the same, but different. But like, uh, have we ever had a bad flu outbreak here? Like Shakopee, what, three, four years ago?
We, that's a, that's a great question. So, uh, one of the things when we meet with the public health officials, uh, when they, when they talk about going to, end, uh, distance learning or whatever, is when you have five percent of your student population, that combined between COVID and influenza. Now, have we ever had five percent influenza? I don't believe so. Not, not since I've been superintendent. Probably under other superintendents it happened, not me.
I don't remember. I'm just.
We, we did, we did miss a day.
Did they?
Yes, and we had to, you know, we had.
Okay.
School closed. They cleaned it up.
Oh, yeah, that was.
It was a one, one day shot.
I do remember. That was about two thousand and five, but that hasn't happened. But one of the things we were looking for was that. Um, it, it, it hasn't been yet for that, obviously. Uh, between, the flu season really hasn't got going yet. Uh, but the quarantine was over that. So we're not gonna have kids in school because of the, of the COVID quarantine rules.
I was just, I was just wondering if, like I said, it was a few years back, but Shakopee got hit really, really hard with the flu. And, you know, it was not five percent. I think they were like in the fifty, sixty percent.
Five, you gotta get to five and then that's when they tell you shut down.
You know, when that happens, pre-pandemic, did they, did Shakopee close down? Do they, I mean, what's the standard procedure for that?
I think they did. That you're supposed to, from the county health officials tell you, just like when Denny was talking about two thousand and five, I think it was. Um, we shut down for a day. Was it a day? I don't know. I can't.
One day, one day, I think over a weekend, over a weekend as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it was on a Friday. And, uh, yeah, so we shut down. We probably hit that five percent rule.
Uh, moving on to the next item, school board.
Doing action on that?
No.
Is there gonna be an update, I guess, on the budget at some point too? Is that coming maybe at a subsequent meeting?
What I do is on, um, truth and taxation night, um, December fourteenth, I think it is, or I forget the exact date. I do a truth and taxation and then I do a revised budget. And the revise, I might, you know, do another revised budget in this year as well. But, yep, I do a budget update then.
Okay.
Okay, um, school board compensation.
I believe, um, we were requested to review the, um, board compensation. And so I think attached in board docs is the detail that Janelle put together for each district, our comparable districts and surrounding districts. And I just tried to summarize it and put it together in a PowerPoint because the, uh, the data is a little bit difficult to look at if it, you can just look at it, um, individually. So I was able to find out by going back to, to Denny's pay records. That's the only way I could figure it out. I think this is what happened. In nineteen ninety-seven, the annual stipend was eighteen hundred. In two thousand and four, it went to twenty-two fifty and then it went to twenty-five hundred in two thousand and five. That's the last I could, that's what I could tell from putting together the pieces, um, of Denny's paychecks.
That's awesome.
So first of all, just looking at the base compensation. So, um, you see I have a column for comparable districts. There's nine. Local districts, there's six. The annual board stipend, um, we have some that pay a stipend, some that pay only a stipend, some pay stipend plus meetings and some pay just by meetings. So it's a, it's a mixture. So you can see that, um, that for the annual board stipend, there's five of the nine that pay that. It's, the average is thirty-five eighty-two. And five of the local districts pay that, an average of twenty-seven ten. We're at twenty-five hundred. Now of those, uh, annual board stipends, if you pay a stipend only, the average is higher because they don't get paid extra for meetings. And then some pay meetings plus stipends. And, um, there's just one of the comparable districts that do that. There are four comparable districts that pay only by meeting. There's no annual stipend at all. And, um, I costed in twenty-two meetings. That's about, we have two a month except in, um, July and December. I know we cancel one once in a while, but that doesn't happen very often. So of those, the average, um, would be just under two thousand dollars. And for the local, um, twelve hundred. But the overall board compensation average for the, for the base is twenty-eight thirty-three for the comparable, twenty-four sixty for local, and we're at twenty-five hundred. And I just put a note there, for the last three years, additional meeting time compensation has been about three hundred dollars a year for the average board member. So it's, you know, it depends upon what committees you're on, how many meetings they have and so forth. So there are, um, I was able to kind of generalize that. It's not perfect, but it just kind of gets in the ballpark. Some board members don't take any pay for additional meetings and some, some do. And that's a personal preference. Um, but that three hundred dollars is probably a pretty good, a number to use. And then, um, some districts pay more for, uh, certain board positions. Uh, the board chair stipend, um, seven of our nine pay an average of six hundred. Um, all six local districts for four sixty-seven and we're at five hundred. Several pay, um, some additional stipends. That's the only one that we pay is for board. We added that a few years ago. You know, the, the board chair has, you know, you know, calls with Tim, also, um, coordinates the evaluation, you know, has some extra duties. So that's what, um, we pay there. And then special meetings. You know, everybody does a little different, but I tried to like summarize it. So, uh, a two-hour special meeting, sixty-seven fifty, thirty-seven fifty, we pay forty. Uh, we actually pay forty up for three hours. A four-hour meeting, hundred and fifteen, forty-five, we pay eighty. And then some have full-day meetings. We would still only pay eighty. Where some districts pay more for like full-day. Whereas some districts pay more for like full-day meetings. You know, we typically don't have those. I mean, a lot of boards are much more involved in negotiations and mediation and things like that. So it's a little bit different here. Not to say that that couldn't change, but right now, we don't, don't do that. So this is the information I was able to pull together and you see the detail in board docs. I don't know if you have any questions or comments. Obviously, in the first meeting in January, we're going to be reviewing, you'll be approving the board compensation. And that's the time when you would make a decision to potentially increase it.
How big is Waconia's school district?
Pardon?
How big is Waconia's school district?
But our size.
They're very similar, very similar.
Yeah, they're, they're almost identical.
Is that the only time it can be approved?
That's when we approve it.
Um, no, I don't think so. That's a good question. I think you could raise it, but that's typically when we, when we review it.
I don't really have a problem with raising it. I don't like the optics of raising it right after an election.
Oh, yeah?
Oh.
No, we've been elected for two years. We're fine.
So when we talked about this back in January, we didn't have all the information. And I, I asked that it be tabled until later in the year. So we could actually talk about it and have a conversation. So come January, we can. But yes, we could raise it whenever. But I want to go into January knowing everything.
Right.
Because not much is going to change from now to January.
But like, at least the last election, there was four brand-new board members elected and that's why I did not like it at all. Now there's only one that has to explain himself this time. But I would still, not right after an election, if we waited till mid-year, then, because this election's going to be, it's already hot enough already. But then January, it's like the school board gave themselves a raise. I'd rather wait till the middle of the year sometime when it's not the election.
I just think this is, I think this is good info. Because I mean, really, when you compare ourselves to the local six districts, I know they're all smaller, but a lot of times I look at the same way as you're trying to be competitive to the area that's around you. I mean, that's who you're competing against. So, and I think we're, I mean, we're right there. I mean, 24, 60 compared to 2,500. I just think it's, I mean, it's, it seems, proves to me that we're on average at least or close. Granted, we are a bigger district.
And we do tend to do other things using a comparative set of districts.
Right.
Rather than, because really locally, we, we do not compare
Sure.
very much in other ways with the local districts. It's, it's, uh...
But then we're not far off.
And I guess if you look at our staff in general, you know, if you look at teaching salary is and go down the line, we, we don't do that with them because it just wouldn't be right. We, we have a different district than, than we have around us locally.
But even the comparable districts, I'm saying we're not, I mean, it's not like we're off by $2,000 or $3,000.
And that's where we should really continue. I think the president is there to continue the, the 10 that are comparative to us.
Yeah, I agree with that too. But like, again, my only thing is the board gets certified, we're all seated and then we give ourselves a raise. I just, that's just not...
But we have not for many years.
I know, I understand that.
And I think that would be part of the discussion.
Right after certification, I just don't think is the best time to do it.
And it wasn't an action item for today. It's for January technically, so.
But you're saying don't do it in January. You'd prefer to do it later in the year.
Yes. I don't think that should be one of the first actions we take after we get certified is give ourselves a raise.
We could wait till when COVID's over.
Or till something freezes over.
Or you do it on a quarter because we pay it quarterly. So I'd prefer to do it on a quarter.
Right, I agree. Well, and the thing is like, if we voted on it, let's just, I'm going to hypothetical.
It doesn't have to be unanimous, you can vote against it.
Hypothetical, we bring it up in May. And we're like, yep, come June or July 1st, quarter start, right? That's when it would take effect.
That's the beginning of the year anyway.
Fiscal.
Fiscal, here it is, right.
Well, I mean...
Yeah, and you would still review it in January of 2022.
Right.
Right. I get what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. I can support that, but I can't support having a conversation in January and not go into it knowing this. And this is huge and it's important. And I think we need to look at it. I'm not asking for a raise. I'm asking us to look at it.
No, and it's, and it's nice to have a comparative view of what we are compensated.
Yep.
Right. And I think it's interesting that the board has not taken a compensation increase since 2005. That's interesting.
A long time.
That's a long time. And there's not very many boards. I don't care what it is.
Been a lot of controversy on some of those too.
Right. But get them every year.
It should get, it should get raised. We should be closer where Northfield is for sure. 15 years is a long time. And I'm not looking out for my own hide. I'm saying in the future, if you want to get people to run for this,
Yep.
there's less people that are, have the time. And if you want quality people to serve, you got to offer them something because it's not like we're getting rich. So I don't feel bad about it. When I was in city council, they had not done it forever either. We went over the same thing and it's like, I mean, when you can't get people to run for your boards, you got to dangle the carrot eventually.
It's not a big budget line item.
No, it is not a budget line item.
But I, again, but my concern is the optics.
And my, my observation, you know, we pay $40 for up to a three-hour meeting and that seems to be, you know, if it's a three-hour meeting, not making very much money. So, I mean, I know that, yeah, so that would be a...
13 bucks an hour.
Sandy, I'd prefer you not to encourage, I'd prefer you not to encourage three-hour meetings.
You like the all-day meetings.
I'll second the motion.
Hey.
Well, thank you for bringing this forward. Thank you for putting it together because I, I think, I think we should just know it and discuss it. So that's all I asked. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and now we have another resolution to accept a donation from QuickTrip.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to consider the resolution to accept a $1,000 donation from the QuickTrip company.
So moved.
Your second.
Second.
Whereas the school board may accept the gift valued at $1,000 or more only by adoption of the resolution by two-thirds of its members. Whereas QuickTrip wishes to donate $1,000 to community education for the purpose of providing scholarships to individuals and families in need. Now therefore, be it resolved, the New Prague Area School Board shall accept the donation with no circumstance or no conditions included. How do you vote on this, Matthew?
Yes.
Emmy?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Dennis, yes, item passes.
Oh, Kim.
Oh, Kim, I'm sorry.
She fell asleep.
Thank you, Kim, and thank you for catching that. Now it's unanimous.
Okay, and so we have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.